Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, this is such a lively crowd. I feel bad banging that gavel and interrupting everyone. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Welcome to the February 3rd, 2020 Hingham School Committee meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please note the meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If there's anyone in the room who intends to audio or video record this meeting tonight, could you just please let me know? All right. Thank you, seeing none. Just a quick note before we move into the agenda. Tonight, it's a two-parter. We have our regular business school committee meeting, and then, in the middle of it, at 7:30, we will break for a public hearing on the fiscal year '21 operating budget. So after we approve minutes, we'll do a few of our normal business agenda items, and then at 7:30, we'll call to order the public hearing, and then anyone who's here for the public hearing can make comments on the budget at that time. All right. So I'm going to move on to item number two, approval of minutes. We have several minutes to approve. Does anyone want to make a motion? Carlos?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 11, 2019. I mean, this is not actually a school committee. This was a meeting at the Massachusetts School Building Authority to discuss MSBA.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, approved.
I move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January 6th, 2020.
Second. Thanks, Liza. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All right.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting, the school committee budget meeting, held on January 9, 2020.
Thanks, Liza. Any discussion? Ed?
When I read these minutes, I frankly forgot what DECA meant. So I looked it up on Google, and it's an entrepreneurship enterprise. But, believe it or not, Google did not tell me what DECA stands for. So I asked, what does DECA stand for?
I think Rick or Andy could probably tell us.
Actually, I can't either. Neither can the person who runs it, and he can't find the definition either. But it is entrepreneurship.
So maybe we could just...
It's kind of mind-boggling that he can't find what it actually stands for.
I'm embarrassed to admit, I swear, I saw this had come up before, and we...
High school entrepreneurship.
That's what I was going to say. This is all coming back to me. Jamie's going to look into that. I was quite sure we came up with the acronym, what it stood for, a couple weeks ago. And if Jamie comes up with it, we will insert it into the minutes. Any other questions? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Great. At 2.4?
Finally, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the school committee budget meeting held on January 16, 2020.
I'll second that as well.
Any comments, questions on those? All in favor? Aye. Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
DECA, founded in 1946, stands for the Distributed Education Clubs of America, DECA.
Thank you.
To improve educational career opportunities in marketing, management, and entrepreneurship for students.
Thank you. That will be on the final exam, everyone, so write that down. All right. Questions and comments? This is item three on the agenda. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement, and we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed during our meetings. We do also offer time during public comment for items that are not on the agenda, if anyone is here tonight to, with any questions or comments for the committee that are not already on the agenda. Let me know. All right. Seeing none, we will move to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quickly, some of the things, so that you can continue on with your business tonight. I'm going to talk about the new superintendent induction program. I think, you know, I've been continuing my work on that, making a lot of progress and finishing the report. That said, it's not likely, and I've spoken to the chair about this, that that'll be ready for the 24th, given that we have a holiday coming and a vacation week in the middle. And so what we propose to do during the 24th, which is when I was going to give that report, is to really give you a pretty thorough update of my progression on goals this year, which we really needed to do a mid-year review anyway. So that'll give us some time for me to give you impressions of where I believe I am in the goals and allow for any questions you have or feedback that you might have for me in my progress to date. But we are continuing to work on the document for the entry plan report. There's a lot of data, and we want to make sure that that's absolutely right, incorrect, and accurate as we really do plan, because that becomes the important document while planning for the future. And I want to make sure it's completely ready to go before, without rushing that. So that's where I'm at with that right now. And I thank you for your patience. The next part I'll have is, if we can, I'll just say, before I go into the forecasting meeting, I think that Mr. Ferris is going to get that. I don't have it in my packet right here. But the December and January facilities report is in your packet. I don't think we need to go through that now, but obviously, our facilities group is really busy maintaining our buildings and much appreciated. Now, we can go over the, I believe that you have in your packet, the five-year forecast for the town of Hingham. And just recently, Michelle Eyre and I attended the forecast meeting with the town. At this point, I think the first thing, if you're looking at your document on what you have, that first page at the bottom, when we put all the numbers together, when the town thinks about the amount of revenue they have coming in, accounting for the budgets that we've requested, and just so that you're all aware, that the budget that the town has put a placeholder in for the school department is a 6.15% increase, which is the original budget that I submitted. And with that, right now, there is an excess or shortfall of $1,707,094 that the town has to be concerned about, obviously, and figure out how to make up. So those are the numbers we have right now. It's a work in progress, and it continues. And Michelle, do you want to add anything to that, or just of what we heard that day?
Yes. Carlos also attended the meeting, so it was...
Let's write, Carla. I'm sorry, Carlos.
And John was there on behalf of the schools. And then Karen Johnson was there from the Board of Select, and Bob Curley and Victor Boltero from AdCom were there. And then the town administrator, assistant town administrator, and Sue Nickerson were there. So we, you know, went through the forecast for the town, the placeholders that have been put in there for all the town budgets, including the school department at 6.15. And just, we had a, it was a great conversation. We talked about other, you know, other ways to generate revenues. We had a pretty good conversation about what we can do, because obviously, a $1.7 million shortfall is a big nut to have to fill in. But there are obviously needs that the town has, all departments, including the school department. So we were talking about different ways that we might come up with ideas that could help fill in that shortfall. But again, these are very preliminary numbers, so, but it was a good forecast meeting.
I think we continue. It's a work in progress, and we'll continue moving forward. John, do you want to add anything to that as well?
No, I would say, you know, Michelle did say the preliminary numbers, but, you know, different from previous years, the good thing is that our number, or the schools department of 6.15 is in here, which is sort of a change from the past. Also, I think they honed in pretty well with insurance, and there's a lot of updates to this budget. It reflects the additional Chapter 70 funding that is reflected in the governor's budget. So unlike in future years, we had some other things that may have been out there that could create some big chunks of revenue for the town. And based on the conversation, I didn't get a feeling that there's a whole bunch of other stuff that might surprise us on the upside, although, you know, there could be some things. So...
All right.
Good, that's it.
That's a very good... All right. Communications? Any from the superintendent, since we got this?
Yeah, I, thank you. I want to say, over the last few days, I would say some of the administrators and I have received numerous emails with concerns regarding our health policy, particularly, I think, in the nervousness that is truly warranted with the global coronavirus, that people are concerned about what the school district is doing to protect students. I want to be very clear, and I wrote a letter today, I think all of you have a copy of that, that went out to principals. I think principals sent that out to families. I have been in contact with the Department of Health for Hingham, who is in, and the Hingham Department of Health is in contact daily with the Massachusetts Department of Health. We are following CDC guidelines. We are following all the projections that they recommend we follow, and we will continue to do that, and we'll continue to be vigilant in this regard. I would also say, and this is a reminder to us all, we are in the middle of influenza season, the seasonal influenza season. And we all need to be very vigilant with that. And if you look at the statistics, we talk about coronavirus, and that's a serious issue, but 10,000 people die per year of influenza. And we need to be very clear that in our schools, we expect handwashing and cleanliness the best of our ability, and we are taking those precautions to ensure the safety of every student. So I thank the parents for their vigilance in contacting us, but we are doing everything we can do that we are recommended to do by the CDC. And if anything changes, I will certainly update people as that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications?
On January 15th, the wrestling team honored those who have served our country while winning a hard match against Silver Lake. The boys and girls basketball teams had a doubleheader on January 17th to raise money for cancer research. The girls track and field team took second place at the Division III State Real A's. Well, for the boys team, the high jumpers, Warshaw, Bromley, and Fenley, and sprinters, Najjar, Shetline, Diedrich, and Hesselmann, made Hingham High School records. After the mid-year exams and a nice long weekend for some, a veteran, Kevin Flick, spoke to all grades. He shared that an experience is worth, an experience is worth nothing unless you share it. Devon Kushner and Aiden Murphy were accepted into the Massachusetts Music Educators Association All-State Music Festival. And this past weekend, the Model UN Club took a trip to Harvard for a conference, meeting kids from all over the world, along with familiar faces such as Abby Fenley, who attends Harvard. And they were able to help create opinions and a brighter future for our country. And lastly, today, all junior history classes attended the third good performance, learning about the pillar of the Civil Rights Revolution, thanks to the PTO funding.
Thanks very much, Emma. Appreciate it. Other communications? I would just note that we, the school committee, has received a number of communications from parents and other citizens in the town who are asking us to, in their support of fully funding the school budget that's being proposed, and advocating for different positions, fine arts directors, director of special education services, so various things. So we really appreciate everyone's engagement and everyone's thoughts on these matters as we continue to work through the budget. And again, we'll have more of that when we're working through the school, I'm sorry, the public hearing on the operating budget. And we are trying to reach reply to each email that we get. If for any reason we have missed replying to, we apologize, but we'll flip through them. But hopefully, people are getting our reply. All right. It's not quite 7:30 yet, so let's just keep moving through the agenda until we get to 7:30, and then we'll flip back over to the public hearing. All right. So under new business, 7.1 is to discuss a proposed draft of the annual report. Do you want to...
Yeah, just quickly on that. We had received from the town, and each year, they have many pieces of an annual report that's part of the school systems. The initial report, they had requested for February 21st, which we know that the next school committee meeting is actually after that date. And then, so we began working on the report. In fact, I think, Michelle, you know, it's in the Google Docs, and I've done part of what you and I would generally say. However, we have asked the town for just a small extension, so that we can consider that again on the 24th. So we do have that time, so that you can review it in full at that time. So we are progressing, that's all for now. We're progressing, and we'll have a review on the 24th for your signatures and review.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on that? Well, 7.2 is to do the program of studies, but I don't think you can probably do that in 10 minutes, so...
I don't know. He probably could, if he, yeah.
All right. Do you want to, and if we need to interrupt, is that okay? If we do...
Do the policies?
Yeah, let's do, yeah, because I'm guessing programs phase might be a few more minutes. Is that okay? Okay. All right, so we're going to skip over to 7.3 to discuss a proposed new policy, 6.5.1, administering medicines to children. This is a first read. Do you want to, yep, thanks.
So the nursing department had requested a policy that would allow for the administration of Narcan if necessary. Unfortunately, that's the world we're living in right now. So we were discussing that, and the nurses had gotten us some language that was proposed for it. And we also sent some documents on the regulations and the EpiPen procedures that are going on there. And as we were reviewing all the regulations, it turned out that we are supposed to have a policy on the administration of medicines to students, and you're supposed to re-up it every two years, and we don't. So what we did is, we took the MAS-C sample policy and kind of rolled in the Narcan language to it. So hopefully, this will, A, allow us to have our nurses administer Narcan if they need to, and then it'll get us up to date with the policy. So that's in the packet.
Okay.
And it's a first read.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions on the new policy? Comments, suggestions?
I have one quick comment in the Narcan part. This is just like a writing thing. In the second paragraph, it starts with, "It is the policy of the Hingham Public Schools that all schools shall provide." I don't think we need that phrase. "It is the policy of the Hingham Public Schools that..." It can just start with "all schools shall provide," because this is the policy. So we just don't need those first couple of words, but otherwise, it all sounded good to me. As a parent of a child who had an EpiPen, it made sense, so...
Great. All right.
And I like that the Narcan is for the high school and the middle school focus. I think that's a good compromise of worrying about if you have Narcan and the public is in the building, and then how do you get access? But it'd be more of high school and middle school where the need would be. So I appreciate that.
I'll be there. All right.
If I can say a comment about the EpiPens, we are, as we've worked on the EpiPens and potentially having a stock of those, and I think I've worked with the nurses since our last meeting, one of the items that we're running, or a problem we're running into, is that we have a company that supplies us a very small supply of stock, which isn't enough for us to have for our full stock. We're running into an issue because pharmacies in Massachusetts will not sell us EpiPens. And so that could become an issue. I know that that question has been raised before. We would like to stock EpiPens potentially, and then allow, you know, parents to take those, all those homes. We have lots of them in other places. We are having some difficulty with that, and I just want to update, because people have asked that question before. But so, we're trying to work through that and to see if there's any other way for us to be able to do that in the future. Are you doing both doses of the EpiPen? We have, we have a junior and an adult. Yes. Yeah.
You ask that whether a school resource officer already, I mean, it's capable of, you know, performing Narcan on an individual, right? And they have, they have the material too, don't they?
Right. They, the last I checked, Carlos, is they did not have, they are able to do it, but they are not carrying it on their person. That was the last time I checked. I don't know if that's changed since that time, but when I checked probably a month or so ago, they were not.
I think we want to check that too.
But I suspect that'll happen in the future.
You'd think that that's something that would follow them as well.
Yeah.
So you will bring that back to our next meeting? All right, great. Thank you. 7.4, to review an amended agreement for South Shore Collaborative, Educational Collaborative to admit Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and act as appropriate. Do you...
You have that language in your, in your package?
Yep, so does everybody see that in their packet? So all the school committees who are currently members of the South Shore Collaborative have to vote to admit Whitman-Hanson Regional School District as new members to the collaborative. So that is in the packet. It's a, looks like a Gmail, I think, right? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Hingham School Committee votes in favor of supporting their addition to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School to the South Shore Educational Collaborative.
Second, Carrie. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye.
I think you have to, did you read the actual language? The actual language is asked to be voted on just somewhere. Do you have that in front of you?
I see it. Yep.
Okay, do you have that?
Do you have it, Carrie, or do you want me to read it?
I don't have that.
I have it in front of me here.
I got it. Thank you. All right.
Pursuant to articles eight and nine of the collaborative agreement of the South Shore Education Collaborative, the Board of Directors of the Collaborative has approved the following amendments to that agreement. The Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, acting by and through its schools, its school committee, is hereby admitted as a member of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, and the preamble of the collaborative agreement shall be amended by adding Whitman-Hanson to the list of members of the collaborative, approved by the school committee of the town of Hingham on this day of, 3rd of February of 2020. Signed by Chairman Michelle Eyre.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, great. Thank you. Welcome, Whitman-Hanson. All right, we're going to read on the athletic report as well. How about we, like, a couple minutes before the public hearing, how about we do the field trips? To receive notification of the overnight field trip to the Hingham High School, of the Hingham High School Drama Club to New York City on April 3rd through April 5th. It's a tradition for the Drama Club. I have had the pleasure of attending it on multiple occasions myself. It is a wonderful trip. Does anybody have any comments, thoughts, questions on it?
What should they say?
I don't know yet. It's the only thing.
They always say good stuff.
You always say good stuff. I don't know yet, though. All right. All right, so we, I always, I'm sorry, I always forget if we vote on these.
No, we don't have to vote.
We're just forgetting the notifications. All right. And then we have, there's two other additional field trips. Notification of the overnight field trip of Hingham High School students to Iceland February 12th through February 19th, 2021. So that is next February break, I would guess, on those dates. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that fabulous sounding trip? All right. And then, to receive notification of overnight field trip of Hingham High School students to Peru on April 15th through April 23rd, April vacation week of 2021. What a fabulous trip. Any questions on those? Okay. Great. All right, I'm going to read through, we have a notification of appointments of food service technicians, Brian Dean for Hingham Public Schools, and Teresa Rotondo at Hingham Middle School, and Jared Grimm, a parrot educator at Hingham Middle School. So congratulations to those appointments. And to receive notifications of the resignations of special education teacher Maya Hegi and custodian Mark Mitchell, both of Hingham High School. On a personal note, both of them will be very missed. Those are, you know, Maya was doing great work at the Hingham High School, and Mark Mitchell was one of the, he's a great custodian. So we wish them both well. Yeah?
Just a quick note.
Sure.
So, Liza, they are seeing West Side Story, Jigga Little Pill, and Mrs. Del Fire in New York. Those are the shows.
Yes.
And the other thing, just, well, we have a few minutes before the hearing begins. My office will be chairing the search for the new human resources director. And we just worked out today the recruiting timeline and the structure of the interview team, and so we would like the committee to sort of self-nominate somebody who would like to be on that interview team with us for the preliminary round. As you know, the leadership team will review the applications. From there, we'll identify six to eight candidates to come in person for interviews.
Okay.
And that's the team that will be made up of people from various constituencies who will help us determine those people who will move forward as semifinalists to meet with the central office administration. So probably under 48 hours, just because that just came up today. And we won't see you again until the posting is closed. And so if you want to get the name of the person to be able to start to coordinate the training, and we're reaching out to our directors and our principals and assistant principals tomorrow to recruit people to be a part of that team. So I just wanted to put it on your radar and maybe identify somebody who might be, want to be involved.
Sure. Does anyone, does anyone have a, Carrie?
Yeah.
Carrie, okay. Welcome aboard.
There we go. Thank you. All right, great. Thank you. All right, and that is perfect timing. Thank you. All right, it is 7:29, so we're going to go back to item six on our agenda, which is to open the public hearing on the fiscal year '21 operating budget. So it is, just my clock says 7:30, so I will call to order the public hearing, and I will turn it over to Dr. Austin to present the administration's proposed fiscal year '21 operating budget. And then we will have time for questions, comments.
Well, good evening again. And so tonight's PowerPoint is probably the shortest, since we really want to take more time to make sure that people have the chance to speak tonight. So I'm going to do a brief review of where we are right now in the budget process itself. And so it's only a six or seven slides, fairly brief. So the first one is a, reminded everyone, the mission and core beliefs that we have, which is the foundation of the budget, is the mission of the Hingham Public Schools, and it's to provide a challenging and comprehensive educational programs in a safe and supportive environment, enabling all students to develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success as local and global citizens. And our core beliefs are fulfillment of individual potential, respect for self and others, civic responsibility, commitment to lifelong learning, and service to others. So the Hingham Public Schools FY '21 proposed budget was developed to address the following. One, and these are in order, the needs of the students. Two, the mission and vision of the school district. Three, the priorities set by the school committee. Four, the needs is determined by district and school administration and staff. And five, the needs and expectations of the community. So the base budget for FY '20 and status quo FY '21. To review where we are, the approved FY '20 operating budget was $54,318.26. The status quo budget for FY '21, and what I mean by status quo, that includes salary steps for employees, a financial allowance for negotiation with all six units, and our contractual obligations. So our status quo budget for FY '21 would be $56,730,985. That's an increase for status quo of FY '21 of $2,411,159 over FY '20. Then the percent of the increase for FY '21 at this point is 4.4% for status quo. In the proposed budget, the FY '21 budget, the proposed, as I said, the proposed budget for FY '21 is $57,661,728. This is an increase over FY '20 of $3,341,902, or 6.15%. And the increase over status quo is $930,743. In the superintendent's proposed budget includes the status quo budget plus administrative needs, which is our HR director, and we're, as Jamie just mentioned, in hiring, that's $50,000 to fund that fully. HTSS instructional needs, which is the Hingham Tiered Systems of Support's instructional needs, which is in the area of math, at the cost of $456,338. Our professional development that goes with that is $18,000. And the Hingham Tiered Systems of Support technology requirements is $48,822. Regular education, that is the addition of... Regular education, that is the addition of certain positions to support the general education system, is $145,668. And the increase of pre-K special education, $53,928, and then special education positions of $157,986 make up that $930,743. Next slide is, and I know it's probably hard to look at back there, and I apologize, there's not much I can do about that, on the slide, but the, the first in blue are the, the general education budget, as it has been since the very beginning, and then you'll see all the articles within, or the areas in that budget. The, I need my pointer, and I'm sorry, there we go. So just to give you an idea, this area here, so the proposed budget for, for general, for total regular education is $43,315,213, which is an increase of $2,282,853 over FY '20, or a 5.56% increase. In special education, the proposed FY '21 budget is $14,174,390, which is an increase of $1,075,825, or 8.21%. And then finally vocational technical is $172,125 is proposed, that's actually a decrease of $16,777, or minus 8.88%. So what you see in that budget and what was presented to you tonight was this, is basically what is in that 615 budget, all-inclusive, in those areas. And this is the same as it's been now for a while.
Just for your information, the document that's up front, it has $2,000 more than the total amount there.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if we got one of these, or I didn't get the updated.
Is that, but the.
But it's 250 versus 901.
It's where the, yeah, the. Votech?
Votech is off.
Yeah, so it's, the rate's increased, so I changed the budget.
Oh, and I did get it in that, I apologize.
But the percent was the same, so.
Thank you, yeah, just one, thank you. So now, and the other things that I wanted to highlight today is that in the proposed FY '20, we've put on things that we called highly critical needs, so I'm gonna talk specifically tonight about those tier-two things that we recommended, but were not included in the budget due to the, what we considered financially difficult at this time. So the proposed budget for FY '21, the way that I propose it is 615, is $57,661,728. The increase over, as I've already said, over FY '20 is $3,341,902, or 6.15. So these items were considering on deck for FY '22, and still up for consideration, obviously, in discussion at a later date, which would include additional regular education positions at 223, 249, special education positions at 112, 338, athletics 6,608, and then, which would have the highly critical needs total of $342,195. Within that, when I say regular education, that includes the fine arts director is in that, and then the special education director is in the special education side. So those are both there. And to illustrate the point that we talked about, the finance piece, if these were included, that $342,195 were included in the FY '21 budget, the budget would go to $58,3,923, or 6.78% increase. So that's the, that's the budget, and that's, for the most part, what we've been talking about mostly, and I certainly now, that was the overview briefly to start your hearing. And I would take any questions from, from you or anyone else that we have.
Does anybody on the committee have any questions or comments?
Can you just go back one screen if you mind? Thank you.
Does anybody on the committee want to have a comment, or anyone from in the audience who is here to voice their questions or concerns or comments about the budget as proposed? It is a lot of work to put this budget together, so we appreciate everything that John Ferris and his team have been doing to work on this, and also to our advisory committee members who have been attending all these meetings and who have been offering, you know, giving us some questions and really good ideas to think about as we work through the budget process. We had a really productive meeting a couple of Sundays ago with the advisory committee members. We've met with some CPAC folks chatting about it. I know the staff and the department heads and the principals put a ton of work into putting forth what they, their needs are, and I think we can't put too fine apart, point on it, that these are all needs and not wants. And we really, just, the committee really appreciates all the work that goes into putting this budget together, so we want to thank you all for all you've done. There are some really important initiatives on here that we feel are important to fund. You know, we, we've been talking at a couple of meetings that we've had, and one of the things that comes up a lot is that I think people sometimes feel, well, I think everybody brings their own experience to schools today, right? Like, everybody's an expert. I went to school, of course I know how schools should be run, I went there. But it's so different than when we were in school, right? I sort of liken it to, I feel like when we, and I'm of a certain age, but I feel like all around the same age, that when we were in school, it was all about, just get those kids out of here, just get them out of high school, right? Just get them through the system and push them through. But now, the mission of the public schools, and this isn't just Hingham's mission, right? This is, if you go on the Department of Education, the mission of the public schools in the United States today is to prepare students for their future success. So it's not just, they walk out of these doors and they're not our responsibility anymore. They aren't our responsibility anymore, but they were when they were here, and they, and we need to prepare them for the future that they're going to have. So it's an inconvenient truth, that takes a lot of money to do, but we do understand that the town has the resources that it has, so it's a very delicate balancing act of what we, what the town has to provide for revenue versus what we need to spend, whether it's the school department, the fire department, the police, every, every town department that needs more funds to get through. So we don't profess to have any of the answers on the committee as to how we can fix that revenue problem, but we do know that we've got expenses that we need to fund, and we'll try to do it in the most financially responsible way that we can, so.
Well, I want to go back to the quote cited by Emma tonight, "An experience is worth nothing unless you share." Well, let me share with you my experience. Before I ran for the school committee and joined this body, I was very passionate, you know, in advocating for special ed, for fine arts. As a matter of fact, you know, when the directors came to do, present to us a couple of years ago, some of the programs on, on fine arts, I said then that we ought to consider hiring a director of fine arts. So it's something that this body believes in, and the same goes for special ed. I mean, we've been pushing for additional counselors, teachers, and yet fortunately we have been able to fund some of them. And it is unfortunate that many times that we start talking about, you know, our pay student expenditure is, you know, in the bottom of the twentieth town, benchmark, benchmark town, benchmark town that we, you know, share with. I think last year we were nineteenth out of twenty. I think this year, perhaps we had the twentieth. So in a way, I would say shame on us for that. But at the same time, understanding that, you know, revenues, you know, we only have so much money to do the things, and it's not that we don't want to do all the stuff that we envision. So I want to say to the parents that, you know, we got involved and wrote us letters of support, know that, you know, I for one, I'm very supportive of everything that you said, and I think I can sort of like speak to this body as well, that we are very supportive. It's just a matter of us coming up with, you know, many times people may say that the school committee has nothing to do with revenue in town, that we are not the board of select me or the advisory, but let me say, I think we share a responsibility, that we should, we ought to come up with ideas of how can we actually bring more revenue to the town. So Michelle and I, Dr. Austin, and John, as we met with, you know, the elected officials and appointed officials this week, I did say, last week, I did say that, you know, Principal Swanson and I, they will share something in common, we are really pushing to have solar panel in our schools, whether it's, you know, the field or elsewhere. Citing examples of towns like Marshfield and Mashpee, I believe, they brought into their town revenues more, close to a million dollars. So if you ought to pursue that, that perhaps we'll have additional money to do the things that we'd like to do, and the town administrator heard us, and who knows? So let's continue pushing for solar, you know, power panels and, you know, bring some additional revenues. Just want to share that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
We should hear some of the others.
Yeah, no, I, and that's what I had said, at any time, if anybody wants to come up, just come up to the microphone. Give your name, or, yeah, come on up.
Share with your thoughts.
Yes, thank you, that's what I told you.
Can I stand behind the podium?
Sure.
Less threatened.
Absolutely, yes. Don't be threatened. I, just forget that anybody's here. And just your name, sorry, and your address.
Is this on?
It actually doesn't, um.
It's not for.
It's for the TV.
Okay.
But pretend it's not a TV.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Holly Constant, I live at 34 Jarvis Avenue. I've been a member of this community for 20 years. I am a parent of two Hingham Public Schools, the system. My daughter has graduated and is at university, and my son is still in the pipeline. So I have some perspective of someone who went through and someone who's going through now. What I'd like to talk about is the issue, and you alluded to it in terms of preparing our kids for success, and the differences in the pressures that kids face today than when we went to school. I still hunt, when I was in school, I hunted and pecked on a typewriter. We didn't have cell phones, we didn't have any of that, so I'm sort of old, but, so I have some perspective of the difference. But what I really want to talk about is mental health. I specifically want to talk about mental, psychological, and social health of our kids. I feel that the kids are under so much pressure these days, and the margins are so razor-thin on everything, making a sports team, making a musical ensemble, getting into a college, being chosen for something, and the, the pressure is, is really great on them. I feel that there's a lot of anxiety, depression, and we're talking about Narcam in our schools. So, and one of the things that I think is really important in terms of helping our kids to have a better mental health disposition are the arts. And the reason I feel that is because when the kids are in school, it's structured. You sit in your class, the teacher leads the classroom, you do this. You go to the athletic field, your coach says you do this. You do, you go here, you do this. When you become involved in the arts, it's collaborative. Their, their phones are down, they're working with their hands, they're talking to each other, they're creating things. And I just feel that the ability to have the kids have an artistic outlet, if it's in woodshop, if it's in band, if it's drawing, if it's singing, if it's drama, I think it's really critical these days to help them to have a moment to just decompress, to just relax from the stress and the structure of the world that we, that we put them under. And I'm as guilty as any parent, but I just think that the existence of the arts is really, really important, and I think it's also really important for those kids who are not academically inclined. It provides another avenue to succeed. It provides another avenue to showcase a talent that you may have that's kind of tucked in the back pocket, that if we don't have opportunities for our kids to think creatively and do something a little different, I think we're not really doing them justice, we're not really serving them. Math, reading, all that's important, no doubt. I don't, I don't argue that, but I just think that in the complex world of today, with the pressure that the kids are under, it's really important. And that's the first point that I wanted to make. The second point that I wanted to make is that, obviously, I'm here to support the arts in general, but very specifically the director of fine and performing arts. One of the things, I'm, I'm kind of a geek, I read all your budget documents before I came, and one of the things you have is your priority is implementing national and state standards, right, in the schools. Well, there are new national and state art standards. And my question is, there's no department head, there's no director, who's gonna do that? Not our resource teachers. They work during the day, they work at night, they work on Saturdays, they do all their own administrative stuff, they reserve rooms, they write checks, they do permit, nobody helps them with that. I'm, I'm concerned that we're not leveraging what we already have in the system, because we don't have someone who is spearheading it. How, how do we know if we're meeting our standards? Who's gonna be checking up? You know, who's gonna be looking at, when in an elementary school, to be unnamed, the chorus kids have to sing in the hallway because they lost their room? You know, like, that's, that kind of stuff. We need someone who can check over all that for us, and make sure that the opportunities are there for all the kids. If we have kids who maybe have skills or talents in something that we don't offer, maybe we should be offering it. And being creative, and how do we, how do we, how do we offer it? How do we do it? So I think that between the mental health issues for the kids and the ability to drive that, I think it's really important that we fund a director of fine arts, and it, and it's, and it's critical. Probably the only one in the school system who could do this job is Paul Austin, given his background and his skills, but we hired him to do a different job. I think we'd like to keep him in that job. But we really need someone who can also support the resource teachers, because as we have all these standards we have to implement, how, how do they know if they're meeting them? Who's helping them with content? Somebody might say, "Well, you're kind of heavy here, maybe you should look over here." There's no one to just sort of support them and to lead them, and we have amazing fine and performing arts faculty, but, you know, everyone needs support, everyone needs guidance, everyone needs a professional person to bounce things off of, and without that in our school system, I just worry about that. So my main concern is, is mental health and opportunities for kids who are not academically keen, but my second is, I'm not sure that we're maximizing all that we have, and when you talk about looking within, we have a lot of resources that maybe we aren't utilizing. So, everything is important, I understand that, I understand you have important decisions to make, but I think with the changing environment, with the changing pressures on kids, we have to switch our, our goggles a little bit, and not just say, "Well, when we were kids, this is what we needed." Hmm, that doesn't work. Our kids need different things nowadays. So I just ask you to please consider that. I know you have a lot of competing demands, but I think it's really important. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Sure, come on up. Either one, whatever you're comfortable with.
Keep it going.
Sure. Got somewhere to put your hands.
Just gonna try some variety, but, hi there, I'm Monica Tesler, I live at 246 Central Street, two houses down. I have two children in the Hingham Public Schools, a boy in sixth grade and a boy in ninth grade. I'd also like to speak in favor of the full funding of the director of fine arts position. And by way of background and context, my son Nathan, who's a freshman, has been in the special education services here in Hingham since he was three years old. He's also very involved in the music program. He is the concert master, first chair clarinet of the concert band at the high school. He's the one who tunes the band, if you go to the performance. So in particular, I wanted to mention and talk about how I believe the funding of the director of fine arts position would really help one of our more vulnerable student populations, and that is the special education population. So I'll lay out to you an issue that we encountered just this past year when Nathan was entering high school. And that is, he's on an, he had been on IEP, and we found out that since he was going to be put into the Strategies for Learning class of freshman year of high school, which is one of the very basic special education accommodations, it's the directed study hall, that he would not be able to fully participate in the music program. If you are in the Strategies for Learning class in ninth grade, it conflicts with the, I believe, gym requirement. And then in 10th grade, if you are in the Strategies for Learning directed study, it conflicts with both gym and health. So it impacts students from fully participating in band, orchestra, or chorus. I think this is a very unfortunate situation, especially for those students. I think this is a very unfortunate situation, especially for those students, as Holly had mentioned. You know, music is known to have such a very positive mental health benefit. It also has been well demonstrated to help students attend in class. It's been demonstrated to help with sensory processing issues, that's certainly been the case for us. My son is also a very accomplished pianist, he's been playing since he was young. I attribute much of his advancement to music in his life. And I think that the fact that students that are taking the special education course, the fact that they cannot fully participate in these programs is extremely unfortunate. In addition, let me collect my thoughts and look at my notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, also, actually, it's to echo what Holly had said about, you know, there's a lot of students that may not have academic success in a conventional academic course, however, they're succeeding in music. So, you know, this is a huge blow to their self-esteem and confidence, if they cannot even be a full participant in the band program or the orchestra program, for example. So I think that the problem that we encountered is that there was no one spearheading how to resolve this issue. And that's where I see the Director of Fine Arts really coming into play. Everyone that we spoke to was very much wanting to help and understanding the problem, and there were counselors, there were the band teachers, and many people in the community wanting to address this for us, but no one really spearheading and saying, "Yes, this is an issue," and figuring out a solution to us. And in fact, there really, there really isn't a solution, other than various waivers, or in our case, what ended up happening is we made a difficult decision to agree to have Nathan step down to a 504 plan, so that he could in fact stay fully involved in the band program. But that's a solution that's not, clearly not available to every student or every family. That was just our, how we resolved it for us. But again, if I think that there was a Director of Fine Arts, this brings into issues such as, you know, the scheduling overall, how many music offerings there are, and the different kinds of courses, and how to work with, you know, the other parties involved to find a solution to allow students like my son and others in special education to fully participate in the music program. So, you know, I hope you consider that when you make your decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, I think that the scheduling portion is a very, no, no, you can, no, you can sit down, I can, I'll just pontificate from up here. I think that is a very good aspect to consider when we're, when we're thinking about this position, because I know that has been a, an issue at the high school for some time, is the lack of blocks that you can take the music or whatnot, so the scheduling blocks, right? And so children have to make very hard decisions, I mean, that is an incredibly hard decision to go from an IEP to a 504. And, no, okay.
I just wanted to say on that scheduling issue, kids have to choose between taking an AP course and being involved in the arts. And I don't think that at 15, 16, 17 years old, they should have to choose that. And that's a really big issue with the availability of arts and the scheduling. And that's, that's, on the other side, on the high achieving kids, they have to decide, "Well, am I going to take honors chem, AP chem, or am I going to stay in the band?"
Yes, right, that's, yeah, that's what, that's what I meant. No, 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 that's okay, no, that is, that's what I was thinking.
That happens every year.
Yes, it does. So there have been issues with that, and I think if you're, if you don't have someone overseeing that, that's how, those things could get lost. Tim, did you, yeah, come on up. I insist.
Stand up at the fake mic.
Yes.
I'm Tim Dempsey, I live at 88 Kilby, and I have two special ed children within the system, at East Elementary and in the middle school. And my middle schooler actually just had to drop his band and trombone to fit into special ed reading groups, so the struggle is real. But, yeah, I want to, I'm tempted to get up here and speak out for as Director of Special Education, but I'm going to speak for everything, I want it all. And I think how we do that, I mean, I can tell you by going on the message boards and everything, that I think there's been a very sort of disappointed reaction to the budget from the public, that it's seen as milquetoast, that it's, you know, not, it's not a courageous budget. And I think that, and that's not anyone in this room's fault, certainly not your fault, Dr. Austin. It's not an accusation, it's saying that because we are in a town that in order to get significant funding for anything, we're in the position of having to a budget override, which we know won't pass. And, yeah, so, I think we all, hopefully everyone in the room read the editorial in the Hingham Anchor this week about how underfunded the public schools are, and comparing us to not just the benchmark towns of the South Shore, but of all of the towns in the state of Massachusetts, and out of, what, 350 towns in Massachusetts, we are in not the top half of funding, and in terms of money that the town has, and we're certainly in the top half. So I think, I guess my question is a larger, sort of take a couple steps back, and we're never going to make an argument for an override with a negative argument about how underfunded we are, and how many deficits our budgets has. We need to spend the time creating a positive vision of what we are going to do with that money, because I don't think there's anybody here who is a big fan of throwing money at problems, if there's not a plan to go behind it.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm asking the school committee and the administration, and frankly, the parents in the room, about what are we going to do this year to create a positive vision of what we would do with the money if our schools were adequately funded, because they're not? And if we were going to, if we could raise our funding to our benchmark towns level, not even to be a leader in the community, or a leader in education, but just be a close follower, what would that look like, and how are we going to communicate that vision to parents? And I know it's too late to do an override for this year, but I think we need to get together and say it's unacceptable as a community that we have underfunded schools, and it's unacceptable that we have a system where, I don't know, it's just, it's all just so unacceptable that our schools are funded this way, that we need to put everything to a vote to make sure that, I need to put it to a town vote to get my kids adequate services. And I think we, maybe I'm trying to make us all into a little bit more of activists and a little bit less followers, but I'm just wondering, what are people in this room going to be doing over the next year with, while we're living with this milquetoast budget that we're all stuck with? And it's a great budget, I'm not, don't be insulted, but what are we as a community going to do?
Sweet, that's okay.
So, and I guess specifically for administration, school committee, how, what are we going to communicate over the year to, to the community about why this money is needed? Not just the fact that they have it and we don't, but what services are our kids lacking? What holes in their education? How are we not helping them live to their full potential because we won't give them the money? Not because we don't have it, because we won't give it to them.
All right. No, I think that's a great.
So I agree with you on majority of what you said. What I don't agree with you on is your statement that a budget override won't pass. I think if...
I don't actually agree with that either.
If, 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 if we take the words that we've heard from selectmen in the past, oh, we're not proposing an override. If we take that as, that's, that's, that's it, it's stopping there, yeah, a budget override won't pass. But if we continue and we build the wave that you and many in this room, and many on this board have been talking about, of, "These are the things we need, and this is why the community will get behind it." And I firmly believe an override will pass. And I believe that in the past couple of years, this board has been talking about the per pupil spend, when we have been told, "I don't want to hear that anymore," and we've kept talking about it. I will say that Paul's budget presentation, that he worked with the entire leadership team on to come up with very specific items of, if we could have more money, as opposed to just saying, "We have the lowest per pupil spend, give us more money." No, now we do have a list, and we're going to get even more detail when Paul shares his report with us of his review as coming in as superintendent. And we are, we now have those specific facts of, this is what we would spend it on if we had this much more money. So we would, now we're zeroing in on a dollar amount and items, and why they will benefit our students. So I'd say, us on this side of the room are working on that list, we now need the other people in the community to keep writing those editorials in the Hingham Anchor, to keep coming to these meetings as you are today, and speaking up to all the decision-makers in town of, so that they understand that the community is willing to raise its taxes because it values what it's getting for its taxes, at the same time acknowledging that it's not just schoolchildren and families in town that need more resources. We need a better senior center. If we packaged an override for multiple things, I think it would probably pass. But you guys have done a great job of, every year we speak up more, and I think we are zeroing in on more specific items and why they benefit our kids, and that message will pass. So I encourage you to keep getting more people involved and, and get it a little more organized of, you know, having a focus. But, so I think we can get something to pass eventually, it probably won't be this year, but if we keep getting this message this year, they're going to know it's coming next year, or the, the year after that, because it is necessary. We need to keep up, and we need, we need to do what we're required to do, too. So, thank you for your words.
Awesome, thank you, Liza.
I think it is, we're saying that, I mean, I think what happens and what people in the town need to start recognizing, right, that this town is attractive to a lot of families because the schools are great. And if the schools aren't so great, then families aren't, this isn't such an attractive place to live anymore, right? And that's a risk to every homeowner in this, in this town, right? People don't feel that this is the district where they want their children to go. And I think, I think that, to your point, Tim, I think that it's, it's a, probably for, definitely for Dr. Austin, and also a little bit for Dr. Viness as well, sort of trying to build the parachute as you're falling out of the plane, right? Because I'm like, I'm putting together an entry plan because I'm identifying what I am, working with John and Jamie about what are the things we need to fill in, and with the department heads, but I'm also like, but I also have to build a budget this year, right? So if there was only, can we just stop for one year and just see what we need? So it's, I think that's the, the challenge that everyone has been facing. But definitely appreciate your comments. Carrie?
I just wanted to second that, and thank everyone for, I want to thank everyone who for coming out tonight.
Yeah.
To Liza's point, it's really helpful to, to hear these stories, to try to create the vision going forward, because you're right, we need to, it needs to be clarified. And I think it's, it's going in that direction, for sure, and it's because people have been speaking up and reaching out, and I think, I can't speak for everyone I hear, I fully support, I'd love to find all of this stuff in the next level up this year. And I mean, I think most of us, if not all of us, would, would agree with that. So we, we need to keep speaking up to all the decision-makers in town, and not just us, because we're, we're, we're with you.
Yeah.
And with the...
I understand, I'm preaching to the choir with this whole thing, so.
Yeah, and as far as the, the arts, the fine arts director, absolutely, I mean, that's the original project-based learning, right? So it's, I mean, I, I think we should try to find a way to, to do it. So it's, it's interesting, but I mean, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm with you.
And I do think that the more we talk about it, and the more people in town have these conversations over coffee on social media, which I'm not a huge fan of, but whatever, but other people are, so do it the way you want. But, you know, letters to the other and whatnot, because I think what we don't want is people feeling like we're competing, like we are taking money away. No, we are not taking money away from other people, right? And I think that, I think as people become more educated, I don't think there's anybody in town who doesn't want us to prepare our students for the future, right? I think it's just not understanding what that means today versus what it meant five years ago, or 20 years ago, or 50 years ago. But I think the more we can educate people and, and get people behind what we're doing here, right? I mean, kids are, kids are vulnerable as well, right? And they need the protection of us, and, you know, folks, I mean, it's part of the social contract, right? That you pay it back, right? Your kids went through it, my kids, my kids are out of the system, right? That's, that's my experience, or that's why I'm here, right? I'm like, I never expected to be on a school committee, certainly didn't expect to be sitting in this chair, and my kids are gone, but I did it because the schools were great to my kids. And who, by the way, are both studying for Bachelors of Fine Arts in college, so I definitely know the feeling about the fine arts director. But it, but you know, it's just, just a way to pay it back, right? And that's what I think everybody has to do. And I think this town is filled with great people who are very civic-minded and very generous with their time and their talents and their finances, so I think if we just keep getting that message out there, we will see a sea change. Yes, so, Libby?
So I noticed that when, if we were to position ourselves within our benchmark towns in the mid-range rather than at the bottom range, that would increase our budget by over $12 million. And I understand we're not asking for $12 million just for the sake of getting $12 million, but we do have some very specific needs that are identified now, we need them now, and Paul has done an arduous job of rising, having those that we can't live without, rise to the top. But there are some that are very, very close seconds, and then there are some that he didn't even talk to tonight, that are, that he's put at close thirds. And the thirds amount to a million dollars right there. So it's, I think, critical that Hingham find a way to fund all of these needs, and I'm going to be doing whatever I can to help make that happen and make a groundswell of support. You know?
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wants to speak, or on the committee?
Oh, I'll speak again.
You can, it's a public hearing, you're entitled.
I can take you in once.
All right, well, again, thank you to everyone who came out tonight in support of the, the full budget, as well as the particular items on the budget. It is, as we mentioned, a really difficult process, but we're doing our best here, and we're going to continue doing our best to meet the needs of our students. And I do want to say that, you know, this staff and the faculty and the administrative team of this district does an amazing job with our students, given the resources that they are provided with, so I don't want to lose sight of that. But it is time to start relieving the pressure a little bit, right? Because there's just too much going on, and there's just too much pressure on everyone, and it needs to take a, to go down about 10 notches. And I think, and throwing money at the problem is not it, but I think we are really starting to have some important conversations about how the money will be used and what it will do to improve and enhance the students' educational needs that we are required by law to provide to them. So, thank you. So on that, thank you, why don't you invite them, Carlos? Why don't you go ahead?
So, we appreciate the parents coming, and just wanted to remind you that there's two, well, there's another very important meeting coming up on the 11th. That's jointly with the Board of Selectmen and Advisory. So if you guys could attend and also speak if, if you wish, would be greatly appreciated.
What time is that?
7:30 PM, right?
February 11th in Town Hall. Yes, so that would be when the formal budget presentation is made to the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee.
So we schedule for 7:30?
I'm not sure what time exactly are we scheduled for, but...
I did talk to Tom yesterday, and we're going to try to do that, and I think he was thinking 7:30.
Okay.
So I think that's also the time that AdCom does their meetings as well as 7:30, so I think that's what we're going to shoot for.
Okay. All right.
On that note, on that meeting, we need to talk about what we...
Want Paul to cover?
Yes, so, yes, so as part of this, we also need to determine what level budget we want to present at the Board of Selectmen meeting, and the AdCom meeting on the 11th.
Personally, I would like you to present more similar to what, how you presented to the Advisory Committee at our Sunday meeting. I don't know if you need to do the per pupil cost, they've heard that before, maybe just address it, I don't know if you need the slide, but I think it would be very helpful for them to, to begin to hear the big picture and what you're, because that's what you're finding, and, and they've been hearing, since they've been hearing from so many in the community, which is a good thing, I think it would be good for them to hear from you, or in the school committee, of even talking about the additional million that's, wasn't addressed tonight. So I think that would be good for them to get the big picture and them understanding... So I think that would be good for them to get the big picture and them understanding that the immediate cost and what's in the forecast is only a part of it, but to see that we've begun to itemize things that are of critical need.
Yep. Okay.
At what meeting or which meeting will the school committee be voting on the budget?
So, well, tonight, we have to decide what number, what percentage increase we want to bring to the February 11th meeting. And then we will attend the meeting and then we will find out what percentage we are approved for. And then we will figure out how we will apply those funds.
By the 24th, we would do a formal vote, right?
Yes, for, on the 20, at the meeting on the 24th, yes. But tonight, we have to let, we have to decide what we want to go to the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee with. It's like, is it 6.15?
Go back to the PowerPoint.
Yeah, the second, which one is that one? Uh, no, actually, hold on, I think that's the one I want.
Yeah, I think that is.
You don't want that one?
Well, believe me, I do.
So, is that something we're going to do right now? Yes, we should do it now.
No, let's go to the last one.
We can discuss it now. Okay. So-
Leave it there, thank you.
Yeah.
So, Paul had, so the forecast, the town forecast includes the 6.15% budget increase, which is the 3.3 million. And that's not to say that, so I guess, I just want to make one thing clear, it's not to say that if we do the 6.15, any of those things that are on deck for '22 have to stay in '22, like, right? So if we, if we get a 6.15% increase, then the committee still has to decide how we're going to spend that 6.15% increase. I mean, some of it, the vast majority of it is contractual obligations, right? So 4.4% of it is what, but the additional funds, I think it's close to $1 million, is what we have to decide, where are we spending that?
And I agree with 24th, we could still vote more than 6.15 as our vote that we cast.
Keep that in mind.
Right, yes, yes.
I mean, you could vote any, you know, you could vote any number that you wanted on February 24th, right? But, you know, in the past, we've always tried to go on a Town Hall in agreement with, you know, all the parties and stuff. And we know through the process that we're going to come down to a number, right? You know, I think we've done a lot of, you know, high-level overviews, and while the Selectmen haven't got it directly, they've got it indirectly. We know that they've got it indirectly because the presentations are all up on the website. And so, we had, you know, we did give it to Advisory. So I think a lot of people know the numbers. So, you know, I think in this joint meeting, the, you know, with the 6.15 that's in the forecast right now, it's still a negative of $1.7 million. That's a lot of cutting to do, or, yeah, it's a lot of cutting to do, or, you know, in better language, retracting, you know, certain things. You know, the thought of going to them with a number higher than what we have in the budget right now, which I think is, you know, higher than numbers that we've, you know, had in the past, I'm not sure what it's going to do.
John, I'm not saying for us to say we're changing the number in the forecast. I just, I want, I would like the Board of Selectmen to hear what's out there, to do the presentation. I'm not asking to change the number that's presented. And I totally understand it's, the odds of it being less of a total number, fine. We can then decide how to allocate within that. We might decide to switch things out, move them from list to list. But I do think it's important to do the presentation for them so that they can even ask questions because even though it's out there, they have a lot on their plate. I'm sure they've heard bits and pieces of this. I don't think they've heard the detail in the presentation. And as much as we've heard it five times, unfortunately, they haven't. That's part of-
Right.
Communications and politics, you gotta repeat the stump speech over and over again. So.
No, I hear that, I think that at a certain level, I mean, we certainly should give them the numbers. I'm not saying that we wouldn't give the numbers, but I think the focus from the superintendent really should be at that 6.15 level and say, hey, but we have these other tiers-
Right.
And these are really urgent needs for.
Yep.
But I wouldn't, I don't know, I guess, I'm thinking that how much time do you want spent on those? Because it's a fairly quick conversation when we show them a big, you know, list of the other items on where, you know, other things that we should need. But I think we need to sort of go and support that 6.15 number-
Yeah.
As strongly as possible-
Yep.
Because those really are bare bones.
Yep, yep.
Okay, well, then I want to say, no, we need to hold our feet to the fire and go with the highly critical needs and put the 6.78 out there. I mean, now, you know, how long can we wait for all of these things? We need to put the pressure on. We're just sitting here like debating, negotiating with ourselves? No, I don't appreciate that. I want to make them negotiate with themselves and make them negotiate with the town and say, hey, look, town, we need these things. Lock up.
Which is true, but this year, we know what the revenues are. It's not like we can change, we know right now that if, if we got 6.15%, there is a $1.7 million shortfall.
So we've already shortchanged ourselves. Yeah, because we've already presented, they've already taken the 6.15.
Historically, they would put 2.5 on the forecast and make us go back and fight for, right, 2%, sorry.
2%. And then, then we go back and they throw our number in once we gave them that presentation, and now the gap looks really big. And it looks like it's all due to the school department. So better to have the 6.15 in right now and let the community know that, hey, we're all in this together, the town and us combined, you know, creating that deficit, you know, and we'll work together collectively to get out of it, I think, but.
And I think, I think in fairness, true, I don't think we want to come across as we have been selfish, right? Because we do understand that there is a lot of seniors living on fixed incomes, and that is the argument of many elected officials, that many are not being able to afford our taxes as is because of living on a fixed income. And we do empathize with that, with them on that. So I don't want them to think that we've been selfish. But at the same time, as Michelle and many said, there is major needs. We need to educate our students. Things changed. So it's a matter of really coming up with a better way of doing things. I agree with what Libby's saying. Obviously, we want to be over aggressive, but at the same time, Liza mentioned, your presentation, Dr. Austin, was awesome, right? If you repeat the presentation, I would even recommend that you start with your criticals. Hey, listen, this is where we would like to be. But we understand, we have empathy to many that cannot afford any additional taxes and so on and so forth. So here, it is something that's reasonable. And the fact that it is already on the forecast at 6.15 is great, right? It's not a done deal. I think we should start with the critical. This is where we want to be. And, you know, they are watching our, you know, meeting tonight as well. And, you know, we appreciate the advisory assistance in bringing, you know, things through the full advisory and Board of Selectmen. So whatever we can do.
Can I say, well, I'm sorry, just one other thing. So, I mean, the education process that's been begun during this budget process, it can't just end at the end of this budget process, right? This is going to have to go on for, you know, an entire year and educate everybody, you know, the public and, and the public and the elected officials more and more about, hey, what are the needs and, you know, how do we compare and, you know, what do we really need? It's got a, you know, I mean, I think, I'm sort of a longer-range planner, so I'm saying, you know, we need to go forward here, and we need to keep that education up, even though it's not the budget period. You know, I mean, we have like a six-month or a four-month, I mean, it seems like a year-long, but, I mean, we really, you know, we start having these conversations in earnest in December and, you know, they go till March, and we'll finally get a number that we sort of hopefully all three groups, the advisory, the selectmen, and the school committee, agree upon. And that's the number that will get presented and recommended to Town Hall, Town Meeting, you know, for the overall Town Meeting. But we can't stop there. That's, that's where some of the community needs to help and to continue to educate throughout the course of a year, to explain to everybody how, you know, how it is, how these needs are. You know, we get really, administration, we get wrapped up in all the things that we have to get caught up on after the budget period. And it's really hard for us to keep on pushing those things. And in the back of our heads, we constantly know that, you know, hey, before we know, we're going to be in budget process again and, you know, and lo and behold, here we are again, you know? But those messages have to continuously get out there.
To that point, though, I think what Liza was saying about start, big picture, and with that almost 12% increase that you were talking about and moving back, maybe a abbreviated part, portion of that, but I think it is important for them to hear because they are getting bits and pieces of it.
Absolutely.
And really, the message isn't, we want more money because we're at the bottom of per pupil spending, it's, we want more money because we need these things.
Right.
And so putting that out there and as much as possible will help us kind of educate throughout the year.
Right.
I'm sort of with Libby about presenting it at 6.78. These are, these are structural deficits, a lot of these things, and I think it's important to put that out there even if we don't get it, you know, it's-
The only point I would offer into the conversation is just to be reflective that any of the budget levels that you see here sort of came from our typical process where we are preparing for the annual budget. So I don't want there to be misunderstanding that this is all of the need, right? This was the administrative team looking ahead to fiscal '21 and saying, what do I need? What you're, what I'm hearing you ask us for, right, is a bigger vision and direction of where, under Dr. Austin's leadership, we would like to move as a district. I just want to be clear that those are two different things. And so, the day-to-day operations that we in our roles oversee are of paramount importance. And if, I hope you all know by now, give me a microphone and I will talk to you all day long about our kids and what they need and how to, how we can do it better with, given the right supports and structures. I don't want to confuse that with getting a budget passed to open school in September as we're negotiating six contracts and are welcoming a new superintendent in his first year of practice with us. And so I think if there is to be a bigger conversation about truly rightsizing the district, I would just, I don't want to see us jeopardize any of that by not getting off at the right foot and properly engaging our supportive selectmen and our advisories as cooperative partners as opposed to anybody we have to hold anything to a fire about, right? I would hope that we see each other as a one-town who all have responsibilities for different aspects of that community, but we are one community. It is when we become divided that we are most at risk for lack of success. And our kids are too important, frankly, to risk, have anything risk. What we can do to make sure that they have the best future possible and we set them up for success. So the only, and I'll be quiet now, that's the only point I wanted to offer into the conversation, is just these numbers, even at the 12, 11 and something percent, is only reflective, right, of what we need for next year. It's not reflective of a bigger structural revisions and movements and changes and structural moves that I think I'm hearing you ask us for in a bigger picture sense. You know, shaking your head.
But that work has started.
I appreciate, I appreciate-
We've started, but I mean, even the 11% was based on a conversation around what do you need for next year? Not what could we really do with sort of an open brainstorming opportunity with all of our leadership team in one room, saying, what, how truly do we redesign this to be as responsive as possible? See what I'm getting at? Two different conversations.
So I would, I would like you to make exactly that statement then, that this is just, we're taking a peek in the door and we will be coming back, and we do want to keep this conversation going, and we do have to plan for the future for Hingham. I think that's, that's a great, it's a perfect comment.
And we have had some conversations with Selectmen and Advisory and the administration about having the conversation with people from Mass and from the state, like talking about the, the longer-range vision and whatnot. And to Jamie's point, I was going to comment also that I think one thing that we have to also appreciate is that the 6.15% is what the administration and the department heads and principals have said that they need for next year, right? There are some things I think that we would look to do in future years, but we may not be ready to have those out here right now. There may not be programs in place, there may not be, so I think that the 6.15% is what the administrative team came up with, which, what they could, what they, what they need for next year. And I think we should be mindful of that as well, that we don't want to put funds in place for programming that we, you know what I mean? Like if we're not ready to put a program in place, then we don't want to put it necessarily in the budget. So, something else.
If I can just say something?
Yes.
I know we talked about the presentation that I'll do, but I've heard, first of all, I think all the commentary is really important. I will put out a presentation that they, helps them understand about the true needs of the district. And, you know, and I think starting at the very big, that umbrella part, just as we did before with the AdCom meeting that we did or the ACES Committee, we'll do that again and we'll talk about the things in the future that we absolutely need. We'll break that down to, you know, if it's 6.15, these are the things in 6.15 that the administrative team did sit and really kind of have the heart to heart thought about, what is it we really need to move forward, you know? And I would agree, we really need all of it. There's no question about that. But I think there's also a reality that we have to work in, and I do think that the, it is a bigger picture, it is a much bigger issue moving forward of how do we fix this for the long run? I mean, we can continue to talk about why, and we've done an incredible deep dive into per pupil spending. And we're still doing incredible deep dive, that's one of the reasons why I'm not done yet, because we continue to dive in the finances so that I can be very clear with educating the community what this looks like, and then we have to work as partners with the other departments in town to figure out how do we really approach this in the future? Because I really believe in talking to all entities, people truly want to support the school system. People want the very best school system possible. People want to do all of these things that we put up there. I don't think that anybody knows quite how to do that with the, with the resources we have. That's going to take a lot of hard work. So I will present, hopefully, an equally impressive, hopefully, presentation for AdCom and the Select Board with good information that's factual and talk about the needs of the district, but also take that down, and my recommendation is to say at 6.15, if that's what you're going to go with, these are the things in 6.15 that we've agreed to by consensus with the administrative team, none of the most critical elements that we have.
And with that, true, kindly highlight that the community are demanding, you know what I mean? So yes, it is critical, it's true that your team put it that together, but at the request also of the overall community.
Of course, yes. That's been absolutely part of that. I mean, it's part of these things that are in there because we've had communications with community and the thoughts and needs that's in there. I've been listening for seven or eight months about things that should be in the budget, and I think a lot of those things are reflected on the actual needs of the district.
Thank you. So you need a number to go in for your presentation on, on the 11th. So. It's not like a vote, it's just a consensus of what we, what we want.
I understand the issue, to get the big overall and then understanding it's a 6.15 and what's a 6.15. That's really the number you're talking about, and I think I agree that the time to debate exactly what's in that 6.15, if that would be given, is another day.
Right, yes. So we're saying, yes. I won't restate the obvious, I guess.
So I just want to address what Jamie said because I absolutely 100% agree with you that we are a community and we all need to work together, and I take your point.
And I know you know that, that absolutely.
And I think that, I just want to recap that there are several different layers that we're talking about. So the 6.15 is, you guys really did an awesome job figuring out for next year, but it doesn't even reach the tip of the iceberg. And the other things that you've listed on the list for the Tier 2 and Tier 3 encapsulate the tip of the iceberg. And that's why I was shaking my head when you were saying, you weren't even beyond that to, you know, total programmatic changes and whatever. Like, I mean, I'm just sitting here looking at the tip of the iceberg, and then you were going beyond, and I'm like, oh- going beyond, and I'm like, oh, that's awesome. So what Michelle said is that that's a good point for you to make again and again, you know? This, all of them, one, two, and three are just the tip of the iceberg.
Absolutely. And we agree, I mean, that's the thing, right? Like, we work with it every day.
Right. So we need the bigger vision and then we need a, a, a plan on how we're going to get there, and it's going to be over a number of years because nobody can possibly implement everything we may need in the course of a year. And, you know, that work is, we're doing a lot of that work now, it's not completed.
No, right. So we are starting to percolate a vision, but we need to know what we need to open the school on September 2nd, or whatever it is.
I agree on the 11, yeah, the 11.62, trying to implement that whole vision in one year is just not possible. There's just not the bandwidth to get people up and running. But the 6.15, it's like, the most critical, absolutely has to be put in place, but I would even say that the highly critical, the 6.78, those are also things that absolutely have to happen. I mean, there's, we've got a student body over 4,000 kids. The law would require that we have a special education director, we don't have that. We're not fulfilling our responsibilities. We have all of these valuable stories and letters that we've been receiving on the finance director, that is also a state need, that, a state requirement that is coming down the pike, that we don't have that filled, and that's something that needs to happen. So I don't, I mean, I appreciate the 6.15, but I think if we're going to agree on anything, it's got to be the 6.78.
And we haven't even talked about the, the high school needing an, an additional assistant principal, because obviously the number there is, is high, so I...
But I think we need, the only thing is, and I think that this is what the administration is asking us tonight, we're not, tonight we're not approving positions in particular, we are approving a number. And so the 6.15, you could say, I, well, instead of doing this, we want the 6.15, the funds from that to be used to fund whatever else is potentially that important.
That's really robbing Peter to pay Paul.
The contractual operating is 4.44.
4.44, right.
So we're really talking about a really small amount of money.
It is, yes, it's less than a million dollars.
And these super critical things that are in that first tier, we, I don't see what we move around.
And I, I mean, I agree, yes, there's probably not a lot to move around. But...
What we have done in the past is that we allowed the superintendent to go there with his team recommendation, and then we'll, we'll meet after and we'll vote on our own number. Isn't that true, Dr. Schreier? So, so I think we, we, you know, we allowed Dr. Austin to go on and do his presentation. I think there is a consensus that he should actually highlight the, the critical, highly critical needs, so people can start on true understanding that, you know, we, we need to move in that direction ASAP. So then on the 24th, I think we can then vote on a number that we are.
And I will note, there have been years when the advisory committee came down to making their final recommendation on the budget, that there was extra money, and I think we got another adjustment counselor, something happened at that meeting where something came off of the second-tier list and got put on, or something else, retirements or something happened, and we shifted things around. So this is still, we're still in the process, this isn't the final stage, and we do need to get the input from the board of selectmen and advisory, because there are advisory committee members who weren't at that Sunday meeting, they may speak up and say, yeah, do this at that meeting, I mean, you know, you never know what will happen, so. I'm being optimistic, but...
I certainly have direction, I think, that I understand what you'd like to do, and we'll present both 61 and 615 and make sure that they understand that what we really like to see is 678. I think if the 615 wasn't the most critical, we'd really like to see the 678, and we explain that to them, we'll do the best we can, I think that's what we're going to do.
There we go. All right. We will make you proud, we promise.
That's, that's a high toller, great.
You already do.
All right, well, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, or take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
And resume.
And resume a regular meeting.
Second, please, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We are back into our regular session, so the public hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. All right, so 7.2, is that where I left off?
That's right.
Thank you. That is to receive a draft of the proposed secondary program of studies for 2021. I believe Rick, I don't know where Paul just went, can we proceed without him?
Mr. Swanson, so traditionally, he would send a memo to my office outlining changes, I then would put it on my letterhead and send it to you from me, which made very little sense. So I did, we did check in with Mr. Smith, there are no substantive changes to the middle school program of studies, that's why you don't see any memo from Principal Smith, but Principal Swanson did articulate all substantive changes that are being made to the program of studies for 2020 and 2021.
Yes.
And so he's here, he's available, should there be any questions from the committee?
All right.
Everyone should have got a memo in the packet, just, and then also a copy of the actual program of studies.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee on any of the changes in the program of studies, or the changes are outlined in your memo?
In, in Rick's memo.
Rick's memo, sorry, yes, sorry. Anything, I had, go ahead, Carrie.
I saw one about the AP courses, and it says that students are enrolled, they, they pay a fee, and if there's, if there's financial hardship, then they can contact the AP coordinator or the director of counseling for more information about the possibility of a fee reduction. Are we also reaching out if there's a student who would be a good fit for an AP class and there's suspicion, is the counseling department reaching out to make sure that nobody's unable to take an AP class because they can't afford the fee?
I'm going to turn it over to Rick. I don't know that we would do targeted, I mean, go ahead, Rick, sorry.
Can you come up?
I guess, to be more, to be clearer about it, how are we making sure that anyone, that nobody's being denied the opportunity to take an AP course because they can't afford the fee?
I don't know that there's, that we've actively communicated about that policy, I, I don't know that we've thought of that as a disincentive in, in the past. You know, we, we have offered financial assistance on AP exams for many years, and it has been the expectation for many years that students who take the AP courses are taking the exams at the end, and the school has had resources available to, to provide that support. I know our counselors generally are in communication with students and families on an individual basis to communicate that availability of funds.
Okay. I had sort of the same, for some reason, reaction when I saw that sentence too, and it was more about the length, that, just the word that it said, the possibility of a fee reduction, and I was thinking, is that, like, could it just be changed to say, like, no student will be denied taking the AP because they can't afford the exam, and please reach out if there's financial, if there's a financial need for that?
Okay.
Just a little tweak in the language that would...
Yeah.
Because the way I just read it, I was like, if I were having financial hardship, I was like, oh, it's only a possibility I can get a fee reduction, it's not, like, guaranteed, so maybe I won't even bother putting...
So it is, it is income-dependent?
Yep.
So similar to tuition breaks, or if we were going to waive full-day kindergarten fees or preschool fees, there is eligibility. Now, we do have, to Carrie's question, if the student was, say, eligible under free reduced lunch, or are we already known to us in the system, that would have been a part of the conversation with the counselor, and looking at course selection, and looking at what they wanted to do.
Got it.
And no student would be actively dissuaded or sort of somehow redirected to a class that, because of the money?
Right, absolutely.
It's almost an afterthought that it's, it's taken care of, and if there is a hardship. And I believe the, the counseling department during the nights, right, talked to family, and I could be wrong, I'm not there, but I believe there is a conversation during, like, the program study nights, right, where they sort of go over course selection and go over AP fees, and, because it's not just AP fees, it could be athletic fees, like, there's lots of reasons why fees may be waived or reduced, and it, so it's your, the point of, of the wording is that it is dependent on income, right? So there is, there, there is a piece there that...
Okay.
Now granted, there is flexibility due to generous funding of, like, the women's club, and there's lots of places who will give us money to sort of support families, particularly on the holidays or the activities, but if you're looking for an actual waiver, is my understanding is that there's sort of the threshold of eligibility for the family.
So what if we just change the last two words to financial aid, would that work? So for more information about the possibility of financial aid?
Sure.
You know, that makes sense, just...
Yeah, yep, I think that's a good suggestion. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yep.
I was glad to see a new English senior seminar added, and I also liked the chart for the science sequence of courses, and I wanted to request that we have that grid for all departments of the sequence of courses, and on, because I, I found it very beneficial to see it laid out, understand where your child's, what direction you can go, up, down, around, and I know math was the first one that was redone, and, and that was really helpful. And looking at the English, are the English electives of creative writing and journalism only available to seniors?
So we, the reason this course was designed was a sort of creative writing slash English class to allow for us, if we do need to absorb some of the student population that we have because of numbers coming, so it would only be a senior elec, it's senior seminar, so it counts as an English class. The creative writing elective that we have in place right now is open to all students, but quite honestly, because of numbers, I'm not sure that we'll be able to run that. Journalism and speech and communications, we haven't run in, in a number of years because of enrollment and teaching stuff.
Okay, well, then, I would say that from a budget standpoint, then, we're not being equitable of electives in the English department compared to the other departments, because when I look at what's offered in the other departments, there are a lot of electives, particularly junior and senior year, and you can't take an extra English course as an elective right now with the staff that we have and the student population, and I think that's a shame for the creative people we have and for being able to be good writers is important, and I know is a passion for people, and so looking to the future, and that's also putting those grids out there and being able to map it out to finding the equity of where we're offering courses, I think that would be a good exercise to have and to something to consider for the budgets in the future of being able to offer those electives in the English department, so. But you answered my question, so thank you.
Let's get some more English teachers. Right, we're going to, we can use them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What triggered the change of foreign language to world language?
Erica, would you like to?
That actually comes as a recommendation from the State Department of Education, they're in the process of updating our frameworks, curriculum frameworks for world language, they're just at the beginning of the process, so it's going to be another year, year and a half before anything comes out, but the very first recommendation that they made is to change the titles from foreign language to world language, which a lot of districts in the state have already done, simply because they feel like foreign implies other, implies different, and has sort of a negative connotation, and world is more positive.
Thank you.
I did notice that it's... In the program of studies, it's world language at the top, but then in the narrative, it still says foreign language, I think, yes.
We must have missed that.
Yeah, somebody needs to prove that.
So, how quick?
Yeah, the references, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Anything else? No? All right, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so that is moving on to 7.5, I think? All right, thank you for keeping me on track here. All right, 7.5 is to hear a report from the athletic department and to discuss field improvements and act as appropriate. I know Jim Quattrony is here, hello, Jim, how are you? Do you want to just kick us off and let us know?
Sounds good.
What we're doing, all right.
Thank you very much for your time, your time this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm here tonight to talk about some improvements and repair on the softball, varsity softball and baseball fields at the high school. Before I get too far into it, after listening to your public hearing, I do want to say that as I conclude, Mr. Ferris is going to have a, an interesting way to consider funding this. I feel like I, that wasn't part of the order on how I was going to proceed, but I feel like it would be interesting to, to add that right now.
Okay.
So both fields were constructed in 2013 using an, an infield mixed product called DuraEdge. This product is designed not to drain, and so it is pitched to, to allow the drainage to occur in pushing the water towards the grass surfaces. It's appropriate for light grooming of this product, but unfortunately, more traditional heavy grooming was, was in place early on in the life of the field. Based on the, this initial grooming and six years of use, it's time for these fields to be laser leveled, in some places rebuilt and edged, so that they are functioning as they, as they were designed. The main reason for this is that water is pooling. Fields, and this was a confusing thing for me in year one to year two, fields develop personalities where you can predict where they will puddle. And we dug a lot deeper into what was going on, on especially the, the baseball diamond this past year, because where they were puddling, where I was expecting to see puddles, and it changed, it just, it just doesn't happen. So that's how we learned, we got the, the installer R E D out and helped understand a little bit more about what was going on with both fields. So the, the water is pooling, and, and what that causes is, is upwards of two and three days when we get significant rain that we can't play on the fields, they're just not draining appropriately. A properly leveled field would potentially allow for use of that field very shortly after the rain has stopped. So in your packet, my letter references some estimates that we put as plug numbers and also quotes that we have received for, for work. The, the number for both the baseball and softball field to be laser leveled is a quote from R E D, and we would certainly be looking for other quotes for the work to ensure responsible spending of the dollars, but that number is just under $28,000. One other comment to add here, our current groundskeeper, Scott Trefethan, has been trained on how to appropriately care for DuraEdge fields so that once this work is complete, that we are appropriately grooming and caring for the fields. The next area that I'd like to address with you is dugouts at both fields. This year, our state association across the board established that we would be operating under national federation high school rules. Now, you would think we were doing that all along, I'm letting you know we're not. And periodically through this year, the state association has the ability to amend those rules with certain implications that come with, with the federation, some they're more willing to consider, others they're not as willing to consider. Baseball, they have pretty much accepted as is, and what this does, the main impact for baseball is that everybody that is not actually participating in the contest must be in the dugout. be in the dugout. As they're currently constructed and with the roster size that we typically keep, at a minimum, we're going to have to look at expanding the footprint of those dugouts. Now, in the event that some of you might find yourself watching a baseball game, I want to let you know that as these rules are being, are, are new to the baseball umpires who've been around, softball umpires who've been around for a while, you will find that Coach Niles probably has some relationships with some of these umpires, and so they won't force him into the dugout, but over time here, this is what's going to happen, and you'll, especially the younger, or less experienced umpires will be following that letter of the law. Les? So, we will need to, to go out, so with the, the expansion of the footprint, I would like to explore, and we would need to go out and see quotes for design and construction, of creating enclosure for the dugouts. It would be a semi-enclosed space, theoretically a four-by-six construction that would support a, a roof structure. The idea initially right now would be to, to create a privacy screen by using windscreen during the season and then take that down, so that it was a semi-enclosed structure. This would be tremendously helpful for us in the spring in dealing with safety plans with, with thunder and lightning. Right now, there, there's, there's quite a distance, especially for softball travel to get to safe cover when one of these storms pops up. So we've used a plug number of $10,000 per dugout, with four total dugouts being needed for the two fields. And then the last improvement that I'd like to talk to you about is to replace the baseball field's temporary fence. This fence is temporary because in the fall, we're using that space for freshmen in JV field hockey practice and freshman field hockey games. The current fence is in, in disrepair, despite considerable efforts by Scott. It doesn't contain the batted ball in a predictable way that we can help the student athletes with on, on either side of the contest, and, and quite honestly, it looks terrible. When you look at it from Union Street, the way it's, it, it drives me nuts all, all spring, we just cannot get it to function the way that it would have upon installation. So I'm in the process of evaluating several fence options to ensure that we are not simply replacing one problem with another. Current quotes would place this cost between $15,000 and $17,000. The fence system at the softball field is functioning much better, so I'm not proposing that we replace that fence. We would be able to use the retired baseball fence to help extend the life of the, of the softball fence, so the materials that are still in good shape would be able to be helpful. And with that, though, I will be available for questions, I would turn it over to, to Mr. Ferris to talk about potential funding sources for the, the projects.
Thanks, Jim. So in your packets, you have, so back when we did the fields project, we actually had a fund established to collect the gifts that were given by community members in order to work that public-private partnership, okay? So, you know, with that, with those donations, I mean, the donations, we were looking for 1.1 million, they came in higher than that, and when the, and when we got successive donations after the fact, too, we had set up a special account, which was the Hingham High School Fields Project Account, okay, for the additional gift money, and we set that account back up in May of 2011. In your packet, you do have the, the notice of, you know, how the account is actually running, so today, in that account, there was, actually at the beginning of the year, there was $161,298, $161,298, and we did fund the scoreboard for the softball field out of that, of $17,710. So right now, there's a balance of 143,588, and, and if I were to read the fund, so the purpose of the fund was really to, to receive donations by any interested party, public or private, or individual for the purpose of rebuilding, repairing, enhancing, or maintaining the Hingham High School fields located on Union Street in Hingham, so specifically, the, the money was set up specifically for that field. You know, when you look at the, the requests now to enhance the field with the dugouts, to, you know, provide the maintenance for the, for the, for the infield, and, you know, to look at the, replacing the fence and two, it all fits within that definition, and, you know, and, and it is sizable, and it's a beautiful complex, too, and if it's not working the way it's intended, I, I think that we, you know, we should undertake to have this field repaired and to use this, this fund for it. This gives the, the school committee the ability to use this money without any further appropriation, and I think, you know, that, that's, to me, it seems like a very valid, reasonable explanation, yet you think of the, the fields not only used by the Hingham High School, but it's also used by the community as well. I mean, you, you see that puddling and stuff, and I, you know, having been a Babe Ruth coach, I'm guilty of taking a rake and moving water off and digging up and, and stuff as well, so, you know, over the years, sometimes these fields will get out of shape, but, you know, with Scott being trained and we have proper equipment, you know, hopefully, I don't know if we'd expect one of these every six years, or whether, you know, we'd have minor maintenance every year for smaller dollars, but to me, it makes sense, and I think that, you know, we do have a funding source for it, there's $143,000.
Okay, thank you. Questions from committee?
Is this the pooling above the outfield, so then impacts the field hockey field as well?
The pooling that I'm talking about is in the infield.
Only on the infield, okay.
There's some different drainage issues out there in the, in the, in the field hockey area, but they would not be addressed with this repair.
Do we want to address them at the same time?
I think there's a, a different project that would not necessarily be able to be funded even with the balance of what's in that, in that account. So I would love to answer, I'd love to answer, yes.
Yeah. All right.
It's not the answer I wanted to hear, but...
Jim, to Lisa's question.
Blaisen.
Is, is there a problem with the outfield, the grass, in the varsity softball and the varsity baseball?
Not as I see it currently.
No. You're, you're talking about...
The outfield of the baseball.
A little bit further.
Should it be past the fence?
Yes.
Oh. All right, well, we should...
I'm sorry.
It, that it doesn't, that we should have it on a capital plan or something, just so, we shouldn't ignore the field hockey field, too.
Is it the field hockey we're talking about in the second softball?
It's more, yeah, I, I think I might, it might be better to sit, to say that it's not the field hockey field and more the second softball, the JV softball field and the outfield there.
And, and we do have a price for that, Liz, I mean, you know, we, we've got estimates for that, so, it's a big number, so clearly it would be on the master plan for sure.
Okay.
I haven't put it on a five-year capital plan yet, but, you know, I, I really could, I mean, because it's probably between, you know, about $300,000 to $400,000. You know, as, you know, I did put the capital plan, at some point, we'll probably have to redo those tennis courts, too, so, all of that, I'm thinking more along the lines of master plan for those things.
I just, I asked because I know the field hockey field is very close to the baseball outfield and make, and I've heard of drainage issues in general in the baseball field, so just wanted to make sure we were covering everything that, so, okay.
Thank you.
What, what the coach is talking about are the infields of the two varsity fields. If any of my fellow members would like to see photographs of what it looks like after it's been groomed with water on them, I happen to have pictures of both fields, and as Coach describes very adequately, there were times that the field was groomed and it just plain flat didn't drain, and games had to be canceled on bo, on both, both, both fields.
I would love to have seen here, also as, as part of a project, something that Dr. Schreier, myself, and Ness discussed with the neighbors of, of the Gales softball field, the netting.
Right.
So, you know, because that is spanning, right?
Yeah.
We did, we did promise them that we would address that, put a net in there to avoid the balls from falling into the backyard or breaking the windows, so if you could include something like that here...
Well, I, sorry, but I thought we were gonna ask the boosters to contribute to that.
Well, thank you, we can, we can speak about that as well.
Why don't we keep that separate from this?
But please, address that for me next time.
Sure, I mean, the, I'm happy, if the committee wanted to approve that as well, I mean, it's up, you know, it's, we were looking at this proposal for...
We can leave it for the next time.
We could, we could really put that on a subsequent agenda, I think.
All right. Any other questions on this?
Wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly endorse it.
Libby, do you have a question, sorry? No? All right. Did you want...
A motion has been made.
Did you want to speak? Ray, would you like to speak?
Who do you want? No, this is all right. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street. I think I'm speaking on behalf of Hingham Sports Partnership this evening, so I appreciate you considering this, it's obviously very much needed, it's unfortunate that the, the maintenance early on after the field was put into service was not appropriate, so that, really some damage was done, and then over the last few years, it's just gotten worse. Now that we have, you know, someone who's, who's, you know, been properly trained with how to groom it and we get it fixed, you know, up to the right, you know, the right grading and consistency, I think, I think both fields will perform much better. I would say with respect to the, the fund that we're talking about, you know, you suggest netting, you know, so I've met with, with Bruce Zarro and Lynn Stafford as well, I know that they have concerns about the proximity of that field, you know, certainly, we put up netting at the middle school to protect the building from softballs close in proximity to that. I would suggest that things like netting, which are, you know, for safety reasons for the neighbors, and other things, you know, I would encourage Mr. Quattramoni to examine this project as it was constructed and as it's been put into service over the last six years, and take a look at, and, and see if there are other things that need to be done that perhaps weren't done at the time. You know, he spoke about dugouts, those were originally discussed as part of this project and, and were, were cut and were not included, as were batting cages and foul poles, and many of those things have been added in subsequent years, as you know, by private donations. The fund that we're discussing tonight is private donations. A lot of it actually, I think, is probably attributable, attributable to HSP dollars that came in over time after the project was finished in 2014. I'm sure there's other donations from other individuals in town as well that contributed to, to money that came in post-2014. So I, I would suggest and encourage that you take a look at attributes of that project that six years hence maybe could use some additional maintenance, or could use some, some additional care, or perhaps some things that were not able to be purchased at the time because of the tight budget, and now that you have residual donated funds that aren't budget dollars, that you take a hard look and see, there's no reason why that should be sitting there. This money's been sitting there for almost five years, and I think that there are appropriate things that it could be spent on, and those, that was what it was intended for by those who donated it. So netting is a great idea, I would recommend you take a look at that, and any, anything else that, that Coach and his, and his staff perhaps identifies as being necessary to make sure that those fields are kept in the best possible maintained shape, and to the extent that there are attributes that could be further improved, or, 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 or things added to them that weren't able to be purchased previously, that they, they'd be done so now, because I, I really think it's important that we, we maintain the quality of that asset that we've spent so much money on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. We need to vote on this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Do somebody want to make a?
Motion has been made by Dr. Schreier. Dr. Schreier, go ahead.
Sorry, I did not hear a motion, I just heard him say he was endorsing it.
Sort of like...
The amount that we need.
We haven't done bids on these yet?
Uh, no, I would go up to, up to $85,000 or $90,000, yeah, you know, and authorize the superintendent to sign any contracts, so...
Two, how much?
Up to 90.
We'll do up to 90,000. Yeah, go up to 90,000.
To 90,000. I would authorize our athletic director, subject to getting appropriate bids to be authorized to spend up to $90,000.
No, don't, you can't.
Sorry, hold on.
I, I think if you could authorize the superintendent to expend the funds for the purpose of, you know, repairing the, the baseball fields and building dugouts and softball field as appropriate, or something to that, but try to make it as general as possible. The intent, of course, is that we will invest the money in these areas, but I don't think we have to be specific in, in saying each one. We would put dugouts for the softball and the baseball field, would laser level the, the infield and, you know, and do the rebuilding of the edge and other necessary maintenance.
I'm just looking, here we go. I would make a motion to authorize the superintendent to direct the athletic director to continue to get bids for laser, laser leveling of the varsity baseball diamond, laser leveling of the varsity softball diamond, a varsity baseball field portable fence, and construction of appropriate sized dugouts, four in number, two for the varsity softball, and two for the varsity baseball, and to be funded up to $90,000.
From the field, from that county, what is called the field?
From the, from the Hingham High School Fields Project Account.
There you go.
Hingham High School Fields Project Account.
Thank you.
I think...
Authorized funding.
Yeah, I think we need to amend it a little bit, because I think we need to amend the motion a little bit to authorize the superintendent to receive bids and spend up to $90,000 on this after receiving appropriate bids, because, okay, does that work? All right. Pam, do you have that? The way you want it, do you want us?
Would you mind repeating it? So, it's a motion to authorize the superintendent to, to get bids and spend up to $90,000 for repair and maintenance, Mr. Morton, to the softball and baseball fields.
I think it's to complete laser leveling, repair or replace the portable fence, and construct dugouts for both varsity softball and baseball fields.
I'll second that.
Second that, all right. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. On that, it's unanimous, approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the folks who raised the money, that that was available for the fields project, so thank you for your presentation. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Schreier.
Yes. Yes. All right, I'm gonna move on to item, agenda item eight, 48 hours, Dr. Janey already gave us one 48 hours, does anyone?
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, thank you, Karen. Does anyone else have any other 48, 48-hour items? Nope, all right. Subcommittee and project reports, I'll just start with Ness.
Okay, I have an East update, we met on the 21st, 22nd of January to go over the results of the parent caregiver surveys. There's a focus group that are gonna be meeting, two focus groups that are happening, one in the morning and one at night on the 26th, to discuss the surveys. That's all I have.
Thank you. Libby?
So, so I went to the South School Council meeting on January 29th, and it is buzzing along nicely. Do you see what I did there? Do you see what I did there? I was just looking up to see when the next meeting is. I'm in the wrong year. February twenty-sixth, thank you. Next one's February twenty-sixth. One of the things that I really appreciated that they were talking about is introducing positive mindset caveat and talking, having a bulletin board that recognizes that hard work takes time and that mistakes help me learn. And they're handing out awards that have little muscle brains on them that, oh, it's like a brain that's going like this. So lots of good stuff going on at South School these days. Feed them Mrs. Eastwood. And Hingham Education Foundation has a lot on its plate. February second, they had a coffee conversation at the Hingham Historical Society that Jamie and, Dr. Jamie and Katie went to and helped people to learn about what's going on in the classrooms. This month of February, they are having a matching donation campaign of forty thousand dollars. So any donations that are made now will be matched up to the amount of forty thousand dollars. The spring annual event is April third, so put that on your calendar. It's going to be at Paragon Park and it's gonna be a lot of fun. And they are already looking ahead to next year, filling the board and are recruiting a graphic designer, a website manager, and a treasurer to act as an assistant to the treasurer to learn the ropes. So if you're interested in joining a board in town, I highly recommend Hingham Education Foundation.
Thank you. Did you want to, as part of community outreach, did you want to mention that we're working on the FAQs for foster and?
Yes.
Encourage people to attend PTO meetings?
Yes, thank you. Community outreach. Right, so community outreach is working on a frequently asked question bulletin regarding foster school and all of the next steps that are gonna come with that and help people realize just how long and drawn out this process is and to be cognizant of the decisions that are gonna need to be made down the road. We've, have you handed it to Ray Estes? Yes. Okay, so Ray Estes is at the moment looking at it and adding pertinent information.
Yeah, I think I sent it back. But I'll have to check.
Oh, I haven't seen it. Okay, okay. So we'll bring that to, hopefully to the next meeting for Reed.
Yep.
Okay. And then also I wanna encourage everybody on the school committee to attend PTO meetings for their schools to which they're the liaison to give people updates on the budget process and give an understanding of how they can participate in that. Yes.
We should schedule those then with the PTO speaker.
Yes. So yes, if folks can reach out to their PTOs and schedule getting on their agendas to speak about the budget and, sorry, and then Jamie, I think you.
Just to give you that, into the community outreach, give the committee an update that we have just received, made a decision last week to proceed with Sterling Brand Works as the vendor for our complete redesign of our, and relaunch of our website. And so we've just received a contract on Friday and it's currently being reviewed by both Paul and John to ensure it has all the appropriate components and that it sort of covers everything it needs to cover. But I have spoken to Thomas Sterling, both after our, our group met on Monday and made our decision final around some lingering questions we had. All of those questions, I'm satisfactorily satisfied. And we have formally received a contract to begin the work to re-overhaul the website. So just wanted to update the committee, particularly this is community outreach that I know.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah. Libby and Paul joined us for our vendor presentations to hear a little bit about what the different companies were proposing.
Yeah, that's great.
And so our committee has reached a decision and we are moving forward with Sterling Brand Works. Some of you may remember Sterling, who had worked with us for the discovery phase of the, of this work a couple of years ago. And we decided to, because they understood us so well and sort of had the best materials and sort of proposal to move forward with Sterling. So that is just waiting for the signature and we're off and running.
Awesome. Jamie, were there, were there districts that they did that you liked?
Yes, and they.
Can you tell us which towns so we can just?
Yes.
That you liked.
I might need to take a sec just to look it up while I look. But they did give us a whole list of, and actually used illustrative examples in their presentation of different websites and different components of them. And I'm just, it'll take me a minute. I don't wanna misspeak. They are working on Lexington right now, where they're about to work potentially with Ashland. But they gave us final ones, but I wanna make sure I give you the right towns. So just give me one second, I'll look.
Do you wanna give any update slides up? While Jamie looks set up? Or, I'm sorry.
Two dates for community outreach that I should point out.
Oh, yes, thank you.
We've got two coffees with the super scheduled and one is with the Senior Center and one is at Linden Ponds. And let me.
February twelfth is one of them.
So February twelfth, that's the Senior Center.
That's the Senior Center. That's the Senior Center.
Yeah, February twelfth, at the Senior Center at nine thirty. And Linden Ponds is March second at seven PM.
Yes, thank you.
You're on.
We're ready.
Okay. All right. Liza?
Okay. Today was the Foster School PTO meeting that unfortunately I was not able to attend, but they did, so I'll catch them for their next one. And for the master plan committee, our next meeting is February twelfth and we are going to have a discussion about facilities. So I will be sure to bring, share our issues with them.
Thank you.
And then we have another master plan meeting on February twenty-sixth as well. So I will report on the twenty-fourth of what happened at the twelfth.
Okay, thank you.
And then for salary negotiations, we have our next negotiations with the HEA Unit A with the teachers on Monday, February tenth.
Great, thank you.
That's about it.
All right. Dr. Ed?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Carrie?
Okay, so policy, we discussed the Narcan medicine policy earlier. In addition to that, we appointed the executive assistant to the superintendent as the MASC policy project liaison and document, all the documents that they requested have been submitted to MASC, so that's moving along. We also discussed the foreign exchange policy. It was sort of triggered by the French exchange program that came before us earlier and as well as a request from a Hingham family to host a foreign national, national family member. Vice President Hendrickson attended the meeting and spoke in support of keeping the formal exchange program requirement that's currently in our policy. And she discussed the advantages of having a formal program, which includes support and resources for students, schools, and the host families. It was kind of, it was, part of the discussion is, it was noted that Hingham High School has not hosted very many foreign exchange students in recent years and it would be advantageous to encourage some more participation in those programs.
Okay.
So in the end, with the committee agreed to just table the discussion of any kind of change to the policy and we'll, as, as we go through all the policies with MASC, we'll, we'll reach it then so we can deal with it then. And then the, the short-term exchange program such as the, the one with the French program, that'll be covered under our field trip policies that are there now, so. And then for Hingham Middle School, the school council met on January twenty-first. Vice Principal Reardon and Officer Ramsey gave an overview of the overall school safety and security plan and the description of the contingencies that are practiced by students and staff. We also went over the parent transition survey results. And based on the results, the administration's looking into doing a technology survey for parents of income, incoming sixth graders. People wanna know more about technology. They're also looking for, to find ways to get the word out that parents are welcome to schedule teacher conferences, even though it's different in elementary school. They have the designated conference days. That's not really the case in middle school, so we're gonna try to get the word out that you can contact your child's teachers if they, if you wanna talk to them about something. And they're looking at ways to consolidate school supply lists. And there was some feedback about after-school activities and taking a look at that and to see if we're offering the things that students want to participate in it. We also went over a draft of the general school survey that was, went out, I think, Friday, the twenty-fourth. I also went to the South PTO meeting in Libby's place. It was a great meeting. Dr. Austin was there. They have a successful Winterfest and mini-grants. They awarded twelve grants to reaching all grades. For their, everyone's doing the Read Across America Week. They're gonna have a surprise guest, so we should keep up. They didn't tell us who it was, so it's a secret, so keep an eye out. Social is March fourteenth, it's a community center. And we talked about the kindergarten enrollment period is coming up and we just wanted to thank South for, they always put it on their sandwich board, which is right on Main Street, so that reminds parents all across town that they need to get their packets back in, so that's, thank you to South for that. And then for SNAP, the spring programs will be on the website, it's slussersnap.com. And then Pizza Palooza is coming up on March twenty-fifth, so save the date.
So just to circle back to Liza.
Yes, thank you.
We have, they redesigned the Mass Association School Superintendent's website, the Weston Public Schools, the Tewksbury Public Schools, the Malden Public Schools, the Danvers Public Schools, the North Shore Educational Consortium, Triton Regional, and Swampscott. As done and completed. There's other projects they have ongoing, but those, if you wanted to go and navigate any of those towns, you'll be able to see sort of their work in action.
I've seen math, MESS, and Weston recently.
Yeah, there you go. Speaking of the sandwich boards, it just dawned on me. Can we add to, is Tony still here? Oh. Can we add a sign on the East School sign that's out on two twenty-eight? Like at the bottom of that pole to, it's like, if you think about like Foster has their sandwich board out, which that hits a lot of Crow Point. East School, if we add it to that sign, that would hit a lot of that two twenty-eight traffic. And even Plymouth River, if we added something to the sign on High Street. Are we allowed to do that? Like at the base of the sign pole?
The only thing I know, when that sign first went in, we first opened, you have to look at the regular sign, I think, we got permission to put that sign 'cause it's not school property.
Yeah.
So the, where the sign technically is, I think it's town property and the person's yard's right there.
Yeah.
So surely we could see if we could make space, but nothing out there really belongs to us. So we'd have to figure out something to happen.
Yeah, there are sign rules in town, so.
Yeah.
Just a thought of, because that's effective of having like the kindergarten registration and other notices.
Right.
That are more visible.
All right.
If I can just add, when you were talking about kindergarten registration, I'm actually hosting the, all the area preschools tomorrow.
Oh, excellent.
After coffee and conversation with them about the new policy and registration process, so I hope to have lots here tomorrow. I suspect we will.
Good.
Yes, thanks for doing that. Thank you. Carlos?
Okay. Long-range planning, met with Caparrot Lay on the twenty-second. Thank you, Dr. Shreyer, Ness, John, and Joe Andros. It was great that we presented them with our capital needs budget of two point two million dollars. We hope to get two point three.
Exactly. Absolutely.
Which is they, overall budget is two point four million dollars. So we've been a little aggressive here.
Their total budget was two point four million?
Something like that, right, John?
The forecast.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So anyhow. What was asked in total?
I don't know.
We asked in total.
No, I mean, not us, in total, what were they asked?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. So we've just been a little aggressive here, understanding that our principals and directors need some improvement in, you know, on your schools. So, and that's that. Let's hope that we hear, you know, from them, you know, the great number. High school council met on, my computer just closed. On January eighth, they had a, you know, live discussion. It's amazing how much they cover in one point fifteen minutes. And now in fifteen minutes, it's really like a great, great meeting. They had a discussion on, you know, the survey, the, the participants there and they asked what the, you know, current distribution requirements should be done. And they also went over what would you change if you could? Individuals answered, there was a live discussion on actually being more flexible in meeting their PE requirements. Some of the, you know, students present even said that, you know, reducing math requirements would be great, adding more civic requirements, Spanish language offering, and allowing, again, great flexibility in, in meeting the language requirement and increasing the emphasis on financial literacy. So there was a lot of discussion there. I have a copy of the minutes, as a matter of fact, I wanna share with you so you, you follow what's going on at the, at the student councils. It could be here for half an hour or more. So I'll share that with you. But they're doing a great job there and they continue pursuing the discussion on the advisory for the, you know, freshmen, so.
Yeah.
That's that. The next meeting is on February fifth. If anyone wants to attend, it's five o'clock right at the high school. And you mentioned earlier about, you know, we're doing a presentation with the advisory, Bud Select Me on, on the budget, bringing someone from MASC or, you know.
Yep.
I think we should do that now rather than later, since we're talking about the budget season. If you want me to look into bringing someone, because we had someone offering Jason Frazier.
I already, yeah.
You did?
Yes, I've already, yes.
Good.
And he's agreed to come in. It's just a matter of setting up a date.
Awesome, because.
For everybody.
Yeah, because right now we're talking about, you know, there's student opportunity, you know, the funds, fundings, the new fundings.
Yes.
It would be perfect.
Yes, yeah, exactly. It's just a tough time of year, unfortunately. I mean, in an ironic way, it's just tough because it's budget season, so we'd like to have more time to talk about budgets. But yeah, we're trying to get some dates together. Is that it?
That's all. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. Actually Ness and I met with John the other day to, to go over sort of the Metco budget and transportation stuff for next year, so thank you for your time in doing that. It was really informative. Just, we were sort of just talking, finding out, wanted to hear more about the transportation for next year, just, you know, in an effort to potentially increase the Metco students that we can accept into the district, if there's room for that. And then also, I don't think that we have talked about this, maybe we have, but it's coming up soon, on March twelfth, I believe. Mr. Joy is a, so Hingham was selected as one of the towns by Arts Emerson to, to perform a one, I believe it's a one-woman show called Mr. Joy here in Hingham. And I don't remember if it's at the high school or at the middle school. High school? It's at the high school and it's.
I think it's later in the month.
I thought it was March twelfth for some, but, sorry, Canya.
That sounds like them.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a really great show. A few, the, the Metco had put out a, I think it was back in the early fall, had put out a request that they were accepting grants for any schools that wanted to bring the program in. And if you go on the Arts Emerson website, it is there. Last year's performances are on there, so they go, it's a show that goes to high schools around the state and it's a performance about race and it's really, really a wonder, a really terrific show. So we want to really publicize that. We wanna get big crowds there. I'm actually hoping to talk with HSP and HEF about helping us publicize it because they did such a great job getting the word out for Wounded by War presentation last week, so, so yeah, so I wanna try to get.
Is it evening or during?
I think it's during the day for students and then one in the evening as well.
That's right. You were correct, on March twelfth.
March twelfth, okay.
Half the school will see it during, Thursday, March twelfth. The other half will see it the next day. Since we give it to the only fit, half the student body, the auditorium at one time, so it requires two performances.
Yep.
And the performance that's free and open to the public is on Thursday night.
Thursday night.
So.
Perfect, all right. So hopefully we'll be seeing more about that. If everyone can mark their calendars for that. Now that, that is all I have. So with that, I would take, oh, John?
Just one thing, just an update on Libby Industrial Park area.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So we're working out the final details there. I sent over a draft, sort of a marked up version of their lease, so I haven't got the feedback on them, but working with the building department, they, you know, we, they're, we have a temporary permit for. a temporary permit for using the space for educational purposes.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was essentially a commercial space, so we needed that temporary permit. And when, you know, one of the restrictions that will, they don't want cars parked in there, it's for all kids, will have to take a bus, you know, and then they'll go back to the high school at the end of the day. And so hopefully we will be, have everything sort of wrapped up within the next week or so and then get the equipment moved over and get them operational in a new space.
Excellent, that's great, thank you.
And this will be short-term, just go into June, and then we'll vacate at the end of June, so we'll have the expense of getting there and the expense of getting back, but, you know, get them up and running for the rest of the year anyways.
Robotics?
Robotics will not be in this space, right? There was a request to build some rooms, but we're not going to build rooms in this. You know, this is just, here's temporary space, let's get the, you know, allow the kids to do their workshops and woodworking and, you know, the June will be here before we know it, you know, it's like, and then we'll be vacating. But robotics is fine at the high school, from what we've heard. You know, their space is sufficient at the high school.
Is your sense that robotics will be fine at the high school next year?
We're hopeful that we're going to get a solution for next year.
Yes.
I will say that in that realm, if you don't mind, I did visit a location today with Tom Mayo that we're still, we're talking about and looking into heavily, and so I'm enthusiastic that that will be solved very soon and move forward.
Yes, I was going to say that. Hope is not a strategy, so we will have a space for the traces in September.
We're working on it, we're there.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you for adding that to. You're already full plate. We, I personally, I really appreciate it. We need to, it's a special group of kids and I hope that of all of us making this effort will show the whole community that we really do value every child in the, in the district, so, and we're making the effort, so thank you.
For that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Liza? All right, second. Carrie? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're adjourned.